All right, seeing that we have a quorum, we will call to order this council meeting for Wednesday, January 24th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
...to identify gaps in current and future market demand for all income levels. In this ordinance that we're looking at later today, we charged the United Way as part of those ARPA dollars to incentivize the development of a range of housing options as part of that agreement. So this is not new. This is not like crazy that I'm up here saying this, but this is definitely me saying, this is one of my priorities. This has been one of my priorities. I got so many people asking me if you care about education. Why are you messing in city government? Doesn't have anything to do with education. And it really does. It really does. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I will just report briefly from the Regional Transit Summit that was held today called by the Bloomington Transportation Corporation, or Bloomington Transit as it's known. We had a, there was a meeting in the Monroe Convention Center, which was attended by people from various policymaking bodies, the city, the county, the university, and board members of Bloomington Transit, and a lot of people interested in transit for various reasons. Don Peterson of the Cook Group was there, various other economic development groups. And it was a good, a good meeting, something that I think was long overdue as far as getting different levels of government and different stakeholders together to discuss strategies for developing and improving public transportation in this county. The first two hours were spent kind of going over where transit is right now and then breaking into groups to discuss what our strengths are and what our shortcomings are as far as public transportation and what we want to see as far as improvements. And then last hour was what they call the policymaker and provider forum. So here, a lot of the participants left and we, those who remained were the representatives of various layers of government, city, county, Ellisville, and then Indiana University, and the Bloomington Transit, of course, and rural transit through Area 10. And there we discussed, we discussed more specifically future collaboration and funding of transit, especially in light of the consideration of more of Monroe County as a so-called urbanized area, where rural transit can no longer serve people going from urbanized area to urbanized area. And since more of the county is now considered urbanized, especially Ellisville, which for some reason was not considered urbanized before, rural transit cannot serve those users with the funds that they, that they have, that they used to use for that purpose. So, they have a shorter-term agreement with the county government and the town of Ellisville to fund it at least this year. But it's, it kind of, that change in how, how urbanized transit can be funded, along with the fact that last year the city council approved for Bloomington Transit to go outside the city limits, kind of came together as, to, to make it really much more important and urgent for all these entities to discuss the, the long-term plan for transit and how we can work together to serve more people, to serve people with disabilities, to serve people who really rely on transit, to get to where they need to go, as well as having more of those what we call choice riders, people who have other options but who could, you know, reduce their greenhouse gas emissions by using transit. So that was an interesting discussion. I think it was really just the first of many discussions that will need to take place. And I do want to recognize Councilmember Zulik and Councilmembers Stossberg, who were also there from this body, and several Bloomington staff members. I think that's it for Councilmember reports. So let us move to reports from the mayor and city offices. I believe Mayor Thompson is here to give us some updates.
Really appreciate those detailed reports and hearing what's going on as you work to represent Bloomington. And I thought I would just come tonight and plan to pop in periodically just to give you an update on what we're doing through the mayor's office and sort of what we, what we're seeing from City Hall day to day. First, an invitation to all, we have booked the State of the City address for April 9th, and that'll be at the Buzzkirk Chumley. That is about 100 days in to this administration. It also is the day after our eclipse, which we're gearing up for and, and city teams are, have already joined with county, regional, and university teams to, to really ensure that we're providing great safety but also a great experience in this, what will be a really once-in-a-lifetime event here in Bloomington for most of us, depending on when you're born. All these things depending. In terms of updates, we are, we are talking with firms now about getting the financial audit that I have promised and had discussed. That financial audit is also going to do an audit of our processes at City Hall to ensure that we have all of the checks and balances that are needed and that, that our staff is all aware of, of how to follow those processes and that we amend anything that might need to be amended. Likewise, Corporation Council, Margie Rice and her team are going through all of the pending litigation to make a plan for, for how we will proceed with that. And then we are assembling two advisory teams, the first of which met for the first time yesterday. These will be short-term advisory teams, one to work, look at showers west, and the other one to look at the Hopewell development. Each of these teams has two council members that will be joining them or have already joined them. And the intent really is to look at where we are with these very significant capital projects, as is best practice, whenever you have a major construction project. We, we discover things along the way in, in planning, in digging, in putting in streets, and it's best practice to really look at where we are and make sure that we are meeting the goals that have been promised to the city. Finally, I wanted to let you know that we are intending to move the homeless encampment that is behind Wheeler Mission tomorrow. Our DRO officers, along with outreach workers, have been working with people in those camps, really for months, doing, doing outreach work. But notice was given during the cold snap that when the weather broke, we would be working to move those camps. I am, along with some council members that have, have joined some of these meetings, working with not only service providers, but today I gathered the faith communities together to talk to them about what we can do as a community to really provide an immediate response when the weather is bad, but also to begin working towards a longer-term plan so that we can move forward in treating people with dignity and compassion and also ensuring safety for all. So, that's my update.
Thank you. Are there any, would you be willing to take any questions at this point, or are there any questions about the updates that Mayor Thompson has given us this evening? Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. For that update, I wondered about the independent audit that's occurring. Is it going to be, first of all, is, do you have discretionary funding for that, or do you need an appropriation from the council?
I believe, so the, the stage that we're in right now is securing a firm that can do that. And at that point, we will, so we're, we're going to look for bids, and I'll know the answer to that question after we have those bids.
Okay, terrific. And I'll be interested in the findings once it's conducted. Thanks.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you for the updates. First of all, just also thank you in recognition, at council's request, that you've accommodated to include council members on those review bodies, showers west and Hopewell. And my question was related to the showers west review, in particular, thinking about possible outcomes or scenarios, like hypothetically, if you come to the conclusion based on that review board, that you would like to reverse course or take a different action. What I'm concerned about process, well, I'm concerned about fiscal impact, I'm concerned about process also. And in particular, we've run into some issues in the, in the past where the council has been presented with something, a proposal for what a bond issuance will cover and invest in, the council votes on that thing, some circumstances change, a priority changes, and then the administration, the past administration chose to move forward with a different direction, a different, a different set of expenditures for that money because they legally could, because the terms of the bond issuance are usually very vague. They might be quite open-ended. And I guess what my question is, is, you know, a majority of council members last year and over the last several years approved a specific set of projects. And whether or not legally required, my question is whether or not you would seek majority council approval for whatever direction we set going forward, whether it's having to do showers west, whether it's a new facility, whether it's renovation, whatever that is, if it's a, a major difference, I guess, that's my, my request, is whether, whether or not legally required, would you, would you come back to this body for majority approval?
So, my intent is to be really transparent and inclusive in this process. And, and so, my hope is that council is giving feedback along the way, and I'm enough of an idealist to believe that I really think that we can get to a win-win situation, at least a no-lose situation. And where we are right now, and the, the proposal that was left on the table at the end of last year was to actually cut several projects from that bond issuance in order to do one of the projects. So, I'm interested in a collaborative process to get to the best result.
Other questions for, yes, may, Councilmember, sorry.
Thank you so much. A quick question about in the moving of encampments. At the public meeting that you held your first week in office, there was discussion about a change to city policy, about the ways that city is going about both moving encampments, noticing the encampments, and a lot of other things around that. And I know that there was a proposal on the table to adopt the South Central Indiana Coalition's housing network. And I'm just curious what the status is or progress report on, on changing those internal policies, and any other updates that you might have there.
Right. So, we already sort of unofficially have been trying to move towards some of those suggested, suggested processes. And we have comments back from the various departments that are involved in moving encampments. And we are having, I believe it's Friday, I'm sorry, my calendar gets away from me, but sometime this week, we're having another provider meeting. I think it's this week, you should know because you'll be invited. Anyway, we will be going through what's easily possible. What I asked the staff team to do is to say, what is, yes, no problem, we can do this. What is, we have to work to move something, or we, we can get halfway, but we can't get all the way? And what is, we don't see a path forward. So, we'll be going through that, as well as trying to get to a place where we have a better long-term plan. Yeah.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you. My question refers, you just referenced in talking about the homeless encampments, having talked to various faith communities about this. And so, as a former volunteer with the Interfaith Winter Shelter, how, if you are at a place where you can discuss anything about those discussions, how is that looking the same or different from how Interfaith Winter Shelter used to look, if you're able to compare that?
The faith communities are interested in helping in some way. What we're seeing now, both with the numbers of people who are currently living on our streets, the severity of mental health and chaotic drug use is, and the nature of the drugs frankly, is very different. And so, the faith communities were clear that, that, first of all, they don't, if anything does develop, they don't want it to be called an interfaith shelter, because that specifically leaves some faiths feeling excluded. So, it will, whatever this is, is going to be called a multi-faith initiative. And I don't know if it's going to land with a sheltering experience or with added volunteers, et cetera. I will be having a follow-up meeting with them and helping to discern what city and, and provider support is needed. This is both for council and for the public watching the meeting. The providers are really at a place where they don't have adequate staffing, and caseworkers are short, short supply. They, they also have incredibly stressful jobs, and so their tenures are not extensive. In order to put anything together, it will need some staffing because of the need to have skill in de-escalating before anything escalates. And so, we will need some kind of staffing and possibly security. Our, our shelter providers don't have adequate supply right now, and the multi-faith team, I'll call them a team even though it was a bunch of people that may not have known each other before today, they're going to be a team. They were very clear that their volunteers don't have the skills yet to do that either. So, we need to approach this with care. It's not an easy solution.
Any other questions for Mayor Thompson? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to the reports from council committees. Do we have any reports this evening? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to our first period of public comment. So this is for comments on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So, basically everything other than the appropriation ordinance 2024-01. And can I see a show of hands here in council chambers? How many people would like to comment? Three, it looks like. Mr. Lucas, could you please make the announcement about people who may want to comment via Zoom?
Yes, if there are members of the public joining via Zoom that would like to speak, please raise your hand in Zoom. You can find the raise hand feature in your control bar by clicking on the reactions button or the more button. And if you can't locate the raise hand feature, send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Do we have any hands raised at this point on Zoom?
There's been one going up and down, and I have a written comment through the chat here.
Okay. Well, I think we have few, a few enough people that we can do up to five minutes per person for public comment. So, if the first person here in chambers would like to approach the podium, and be sure to write your name on the sign-up sheet, and then also state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mark Hagerty, and I wanted to talk about the elections. I was surprised to find my ballot last time to be unopposed, and with no chance to say no. And then, my write-in was denied. At the top of my ballot, it said Kerry Thompson, and was unopposed, and I said, I'd like to write in Joe Davis. As you may know, Joe Davis was disqualified by a Greene County judge from the ballot itself. But the people who signed his petitions signed well before there was any sort of deadline, and he, they said they needed more time to compare and count and stuff like that. But anyway, to find our democracy growing so small, and such a small proportion of our citizens participating in the election here, I think is a, is a sign of something that I've noticed. I'm 75 now. I came in with the first Democratic administration, and I've noticed that the state's election laws have become more and more restrictive. And to have an election with no write-in vote allowed, that is a basic constitutional right. And they say, the argument is they get to approve a write-in vote. Well, a write-in vote is about, a vote about a person they don't approve of. That's what it's about. And so, I tried to write in, and they said no, and they brought the election board down. And Dave and Judith came down, and they said, we, we don't have a write-in, we can't because he didn't, blah, 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 or something like that. I said, I, I don't want to vote for the candidate of your choice. It's bad enough it's one party. It's bad enough it's no poor people. But it's terrible to have a democracy with no write-in vote. And so, when I, I looked at the recordings of the, of what happened and everything, there's no record of it. I mean, Dave and Judith came down, and they said, here's how we'll solve it. You write in Joe Davis over Kerry Thompson's name up at the top, and then it'll kick it out, and then we'll do something. I was like, why, there's no record of any of that? And I want my vote. And see, I've watched this whole thing steadily decline. They tried to stomp out write-in votes when they, they quadrupled the number of signatures required to get on the ballot to, to even be a candidate. So Joe Davis couldn't get on, Ralph Nader couldn't get on. So many people couldn't get on. Who, why waste the time to be a candidate like, like, like that? Why not just sign up and be a Democrat and run and win? It's just, it seems so fundamentally corrupt that, and, and for this, the last little bastion, last little cliff, I remember when there were six or seven parties on the ballot, and then they enacted that quadruple, the number of signatures required, shortened the time to get them in, and restrict who could sign them. And then suddenly, there were only two. Well, what the hell? So, fellow Democrats, or people that are interested in democracy with a small D, give us a help, you know, give us a hand up. The other thing is, please give us veterans dental. Write a resolution, send it to the governor, send it to the VA. Why shouldn't Vietnam veterans get dental care? There's thousands of them dying because infections from their mouths get down in their chests. Why should everybody get dental care but not, but not veterans? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I thought we might go to online for a little. Hello, my name is Greg Alexander. In years past, I've been swung up for the first meeting of the year to implore you to spend $30 million on sidewalk gaps. Women's basketball took precedence this year, sorry. And hello, I'm excited about this new council. For about five years, I have been beating the drum, there are no sidewalks, and people are walking in the street. Honestly, the city has moved a lot more than I expected. Engineering department is now pretty much on board. They are doing the hard work of doing things like enforcing temporary obstructions. It's slow progress, but it's happening. Maintenance is still a joke, though. Public Works isn't quite on board yet, and I'm just going to throw this out. The director of Public Works should live in this city, should use our sidewalks. And the sidewalk gaps, oh my goodness. You know, there's been progress of a lot of different kinds. There are still gaps all over. I'm not talking about neighborhood streets, I'm talking about our city's high injury network, 10th Street, Walnut, 2nd Street. Big streets where walking in the street is a real hazard, but we really need those streets. They're central to our city. We need them the same reason drivers do. We really do need a significant fund. When planning approves new housing, they should say, yes, we will fix the new, the nearby sidewalk gaps. Of course, it's the priority. It comes first. When new housing doesn't provide pedestrian connections, it segregates those residents from our community. It also makes them depend more on their car, which is a financial burden for them and for all of us, because this is expensive. And we should extend that same courtesy to existing housing, especially affordable housing that is already very segregated. But here's the thing, if I had $30 million to spend, I wouldn't spend it on sidewalks. And if you fill in the sidewalk gaps, we'll still have big problems, big safety problems. Safe sidewalks, like safe bike lanes, require changes to the whole street. So, I'm still casting about for a new strategy when talking to you all, but I think I want to transition more to talking about College and Walnut. So, there's a sidewalk gap on the east side of College at Seminary Square. A lot of people say that area was blighted by the homeless people, but that's putting the cart before the horse. Homeless people congregate there because it was already neglected. In the 1950s, they turned College and Walnut into a one-way pair. That's a divided highway in InDOT's perspective. That land is the median strip dividing that highway. It's not even half a mile south of the courthouse. And we're missing sidewalk on College Avenue. That missing sidewalk isn't the worst problem with this street, but it's the easiest one to explain, right? How can we say we care about pedestrians? This is right downtown. How can we seriously consider the growth of downtown when we accept that there's a dead area in the middle of our city? You know, you think about the affordability problems of land and all that stuff, rent, just land we're wasting. Think about it. This block between College and Walnut, south of 2nd Street, it was the original home of IU. It used to be the most important land in our whole city. Today, that block has a park, a post office, a pawn shop, an abandoned car wash, even a car wash can't survive that, that district, and a rallies. I love rallies, but most of us have avoided that park for decades. The post office was just put there because it was the biggest vacant lot close to downtown. It's all small buildings sitting in the middle of vast seas of unused, empty parking lots. This land used to be the beating heart of our city, and today it's basically abandoned. It's so valueless, valueless to us that we don't even think it needs sidewalks. And maybe it really doesn't. Nobody goes there except homeless people. I just wanted to put that on your radar because it's the sort of thing you take for granted. But it's not the way things have to be. College and Ave, College Avenue and Walnut Street are not all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person here in council chambers, come on up. Be sure to sign in and then also state your name, and then you'll have up to five minutes.
My name is Trin, Trin Piedra. I have never done this before, so I ask that you bear with me a little bit. I wanted to say thank you, first of all, to Mrs. Stossberg for talking about the education system and the inequities there. I'm studying to be a teacher, so wish me luck. All right. I wanted to start by thanking you guys for your time today, as well as your patience, because I'm a writer, not a speaker. From my understanding, this council meeting partially, partially exists to make decisions on the allocations of the American Rescue Plan Act, an economic recovery plan where territories are to receive $4.5 billion. If it's not this meeting, I know it's out there somewhere. It's something that I've been thinking about a little bit in terms of allocating. I'm here today with a duty to some of the people I love to inform you of a massive gap in our public safety and well-being that can only be addressed through financial support and collaboration. I understand it's hard to admit the shortcomings of a city many of us work for, but I'm asking you to meet me with a place of mutual love and capability. We've already talked about it today. We've already talked about it today, and you may or may not have seen the article published by the Herald Times titled Monroe County Volunteers Scramble to Prevent Homeless People from Freezing to Death. This was far from an exaggeration. If anything, not enough was said. I'm here with a bunch of the people that collaborated with me to work, organize and administrate this. Many of us, this is the first day I have looked and felt human in two weeks. I didn't sleep more than 20 hours while this was happening, but people would have died. That's the reality. This project couldn't have existed without other people with me, so thank you. I myself have now worked in harm reduction for two years on the ground, going to the places many people are too afraid to even admit they exist. This, this is just simply not appropriate. I, I hate to be blunt, but these homeless communities are focused as mothers, fathers, uncles, brothers, and sisters. And I see many of them as my brothers and sisters as well. I'm sure many of y'all have kids. I'm only 22 years old. I don't imagine you'd want them to experience the loss that I or anybody else have experienced. And I, I guess I'm asking us to humble ourselves today as people. We can talk here from the comfort of this warm, nice conference room, clock out, go to our warm environments with our pets, families, friends, loved ones. There's a lot of people that can't do that. And there's a lot of people who can't access the resources we still have. Stride Center, Wheeler, Shalom, we can talk about them all day long, but the reality is those places aren't meeting needs either. I guess I'm asking, kind of a big ask, right? But the allocation of the funds from this, from this bill, correct me if I'm wrong, still needs to be addressed before the end of 2024. There are people here whose skills are so absolutely valuable to what we are trying to accomplish as a larger project for temporary shelter and more. There are steps that we need to take as a team to do that. And a lot of the problem is just simply not enough funding. There are people who could do this all day long. I've done this all day long. I love it. I wouldn't do anything else with my time. But I don't have any money in my pockets that can fix anything. We are also still working on long-term solutions. That's not to say that I'm sitting here trying to put a Band-Aid on a gaping wound. But in order to get there, we can't ask people that are shivering and starving to pick themselves up. It's, it's just not appropriate to look at our neighbors and do that. So I ask of the wonderful, beautiful people in front of me right now, many of which seem to have fantastic priorities for their members of their community, to look at each other, maybe look at someone on the street, and try and pull some strings in whatever way might be possible. If there's any questions or anything, feel free to ask. I would love to figure out who to contact, maybe, or what to do about a situation like this going forward. I'm only 22. I don't know a lot of things, but I know that I care. Thank you. Thank you. I think that's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Piedra. If you'd like to leave your contact information with the clerk, we could maybe get back in touch with you. Anybody else here in council chambers? Yes, please come up to the microphone, and then we'll, we'll move to the Zoom participants.
Hello, my name is Kyle Halberson. Just have a few comments. I guess first of all, thank you, Councilman Asari, for being at the meeting last Friday, two Fridays ago. I'm really glad we had City Council represented there. I would strongly implore all of you to really take into consideration a comprehensive plan. I know, I know that it's very difficult to find funding, to find time for something that, even though it's necessary, when, when there are business interests that take up too much of our space in this town. I know it's hard to put time and effort towards people who don't bring any of that to the table. They're human beings. They deserve everybody at that table's cooperation, their time, their energy. Behind Wheeler, 11:00 AM tomorrow, there's going to be at least 10 people that are still there, moved out. I heard Mayor Thompson speak of the work that's being done. I haven't, I have no idea what the plan is. Right now, there's a large trash can there. That's it. And there has been the DRO notified. I'm assuming to write tickets and trespass people if they're not there, or if they're not gone by 11:00 AM. I haven't seen any action as far as what the city is going to do to help them move. That is, I haven't seen any action by the city that is looking for places that they can go. Private property is not possible. They can get trespassed that next day and move. There are people behind there that have been there for over two years. It's their home. Whether people like it or not, it's their home. I haven't seen cooperation of the city, of anyone, to actually help in the process of moving, of relocating, of finding a place for them to go. I'm not sure where, I'm not sure where people think they're going to have the resources to do that on their own. My organization was down there today. We will be down there tomorrow. We will be helping. We're a nonprofit. This is not in our purview. This is not in our, this is not in our wheelhouse, but we'll be there. It's frustrating. It's really frustrating that we have a lot of resources in this town that are not being allocated in a way that actually suits and serves all of our population. I've talked to four people this past week that are losing toes, that are losing fingers from frostbite. I'm not a healthcare professional. I cry when I go home every day because I'm not built for this. This is not what I do. But I'm doing it. But I'm there. I'm showing up every day to help people and to do the things that are necessary. I know there's a shortage. I know there's a shortage of workers. We need to work on that. We need to figure that part out. But four people are losing their ability to walk properly, which is going to make them disabled, which is going to cause more cost to be incurred on the city, on the state. It's, you know, if we must look at it fiscally, which is a disgusting word for me when we're talking about human beings, but if we have to do that, look at it that way. Costs are being incurred. Ambulance services, things that aren't getting paid because we don't, we haven't shown the common decency to take care of our people. I put that on all of y'all, you know? Like, that's up to you guys. I don't have that power. So that's up to you to figure that one out. But I would really, really, I'd really, really hope that we can do something before someone actually does freeze to death this year because that is a very big possibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halberson. Let's go to Zoom. Mr. Lucas, do we have anybody with a raised hand who would like to comment?
No raised hands. I do have one written comment from Sam Dove, which I can read if you'd like.
Yes, please do.
Mr. Dove says, from Indianapolis, several Irvington businesses are dropping their support for a bill that would halt Indigo's proposed Blue Line. It comes after weeks of tension on social media and a heated hearing last week at the State House. Senate Bill 52 authored by State Senator Aaron Freeman, District 32, would stop Indigo from creating dedicated bus lanes until at least 2025. Last week, some Irvington business owners endorsed the idea during a committee hearing and received backlash. Then, over the weekend, they reversed their stance, saying conversations in the community changed their opinion. Those businesses include Jacomo Upper Crest Pizza, Black Sheep Gifts, and Irvington Wellness Center. On Facebook, Jacomo's Pizza wrote, "We have listened to many voices who believe Irvington and Indianapolis would be a better place with the Blue Line project as currently imagined." For months, business owners said construction and dedicated bus lanes would hurt their business and the historic charm of the downtown area. On the other hand, community members said that the transit line would improve pedestrian safety in the area. In a statement on Monday, Black Sheep Gifts said, "I am now in the minority regarding shared lanes versus designated lanes, and as always, I stand with my community." 13 News also asked Indianapolis Mayor Joe Hogshead about this ongoing debate. He said he's cautiously optimistic, stating, "We will continue to keep an open mind, working with the legislators and their leadership, and hopefully get the session behind us." And that is the end of the comment, and I see no additional hands raised at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Anybody else in council chambers wish to give a comment? Okay, please go ahead.
We have Thomas Schwant.
Are you there?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thanks, Isabel. Appreciate the opportunity to ask a really straightforward question of Kerry Thompson about who exactly from the faith communities have been invited to the conversation that she's speaking about? And who is the multi-faith team? I'd appreciate some names. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwant. We are not in a position to answer that at this moment, but perhaps that can be relayed back to Ms. Thompson. I hear one, I see one of her department heads nodding, so that can be relayed back to her. And we can, well, if, I don't know if, if she knows how to get back in touch with you, but you can call the mayor's office to get some more information about that. All right, anybody else? Last call for public comment. Okay, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any recommendations from our interview teams for appointments tonight? Councilmember Zulik?
On behalf of Interview Committee C, I move that the council approve the mayor's recommendations for appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission for Ernesto Castaneda, Ashley Johnson, John Saunders, and Bill Folk.
All right, thank you. So there's a motion and a second for approval of the mayor's four appointees to the Historic Preservation Commission. This is an unusual commission in that we don't have direct appointments except for the advisory members, but we do have to approve what the mayor does as far as appointments. Is there any discussion before we move to a vote? Okay. Pardon me? Okay, Councilmember Zulik, would you like to add something?
Yeah, so I just want to say, we read through all of these applications. We were thoroughly impressed with, okay. Okay, sorry. So we read through all of these applications, and we agreed with the mayor's recommendation. We were thoroughly impressed with each person's effort. And we, and we believe that each of these people will bring a different insight into the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on that? All right, Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll on the approval of four mayoral appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Zulik?
Yes.
All right, and that passes unanimously. Do we have any other motions for appointments to boards and commissions? Councilmember Rallo?
On behalf of Team C, Council Team C, I'd like to move the reappointment of Rob Shakespeare to Seat C1 of the Arts Commission.
All right, is that the only appointment for the Arts Commission at this time?
It is.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to reappoint Rob Shakespeare to the Bloomington Arts Commission. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, will Clerk Bolden please call the roll?
Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
All right, that appointment is approved. We thank Mr. Shakespeare for his continued service. Councilmember Asari?
On behalf of Interview Team A, I move that Seda Cohen be reappointed to Seat C1 on the Animal Control Commission and that Autumn Crisiven be appointed to Seat C2 of the Human Rights Commission.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to reappoint Seda Cohen to Animal Care and Control and to appoint Autumn Crisiven to, which one was it? The Human Rights Commission. Any questions or comments on that recommendation? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Ruff?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. So we thank Ms. Cohen and Ms. Crisiven for their service. Any other appointments? Seeing none, we will move on to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2024-01 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that appropriation ordinance 2024-01 be moved, be introduced and read by title and synopsis only by the clerk. We do have two members participating via Zoom, so what's normally a voice vote, we will do a roll call vote on the motion to introduce. Clerk Bolden, please.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Clerk, please read.
I hope to. Appropriation ordinance 2024-01 to transfer funds from the Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Street Fund into the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund and to additionally appropriate ARPA State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated for 2024. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance corrects an inadvertent closeout on December 21st, 2023 of an open purchase order funding a grant agreement between the city and the United Way to address housing insecurity. By additionally appropriating $1.5 million the city council approved in 2021 for this purpose, and also makes the additional housekeeping adjustment required by the State Department of Local Government Finance in order to move the funds budgeted in the Restricted Motor Vehicle Highway Fund into the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund.
Thank you, Clerk Bolden.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2024-01 be adopted.
That was a second? Yes, thank you very much. So we have Corporation Council Margie Vries to present this appropriation ordinance. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. I'm happy to be here to present the very first additional appropriation ordinance. And as some of the longtime council members know, we don't have too many additional appropriation ordinances that really come before the council. For those new members, let me tell you that basically the city does a budget for a year, an annual budget. And if we need additional money that is not in that budget, we're required by state law to come forward to the council. We have to publish notice, to basically put the taxpayers on notice, like, hey, we're spending more money than we told you we were gonna, or we're at least proposing to spend. we're at least proposing to spend more money. So we have to advertise it as a hearing, come before you, and ask for permission. Tonight, I'm asking for permission for one additional appropriation and a transfer, and I'll give a summarized kind of what's in your packet. I will tell you on the additional appropriation, we have a couple of representatives from United Way here, if you want to ask them any questions about it. So essentially, during COVID times, the city decided to give $2.7 million to United Way to deal with housing issues. There weren't a lot of details in that agreement. The 1.2 million was already given to United Way. There was another 1.5 that was going to be given later in a second installment, and accidentally, the end of last year, the Controller's Office closed that purchase order out. So they contacted the state, and the state said, you're going to have to get an additional appropriation for that remaining 1.5, which is why I'm here. We also, during the transition, Beth Kate and I had some conversations, and she said, hey, that kind of bare bones agreement that we had on the ARPA funding needs to be renewed, extended, and detail about the ARPA restrictions need to be added. So Beth was great in the transition. She, and ARPA has sort of shifted, you know, there's been a lot of guidance changing as it comes down from Washington, and so Beth drafted a preliminary amendment for me to review, and said it really needed to be done by January 31, which I've met with United Way, I've talked with Mary Morgan and with Randy, they're both here tonight. We may do an extension, give ourselves a little bit more time than January 31 to work on that larger amendment, but so what I'll do is we'll just do a real quick, hey, we agree to, you know, another month to work on this, and then we'll have a beefed up agreement that's got the ARPA language, because essentially, we're responsible for reporting how we spend that ARPA language, so we need to make sure any subrecipient also understands those reporting requirements and agrees to them. And we want to have more detail in the subrecipient agreement and the agreement with United Way about exactly how they intend to spend the balance of the 2.7 million. It's my understanding they spent about $500,000, so they have a little more than $700,000 in their bank, you know, they're holding on to that now, because that was the balance of the 1.2, and then we've, we're going to agree to give them this remaining 1.5 if you additionally appropriate it. So that's, that's what I'm doing on the, that's the request for the additional appropriation. I can move on to the Motor Vehicle Highway, if you'd like, explain that, or you can ask me any questions you have right now about the ARPA funding. How do you want me to handle that?
I think you could go ahead and finish out the explanation.
The Motor Vehicle Highway is a lot, it's kind of the bureaucracy that makes people dislike government. So what it is, is State Board of Accounts has one opinion about how we should handle Motor Vehicle Highway funds. Department of Local Government Finance has a different opinion. In order to satisfy them both, we essentially budget a restricted and an unrestricted fund for motor vehicle highway dollars, and then we come back and essentially ask you to transfer it all into a single fund. So State Board of Accounts wants you to budget two funds, we come back, which we do, and then we come back and say, hey, transfer that into this single fund. Now, keep in mind, the single fund still has subaccounts of restricted and unrestricted, you know, we do it so we can say that we comply with both agencies. Until they get on the same page, we'll be doing this annually. And so we're not changing any of the amount of Motor Vehicle Highway, we're just asking for the transfer.
All right.
And I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, we have Randy Rogers and Mary Morgan here with United Way.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rice. Any questions? Councilmember Asari?
Thank you so much, council. Could you kindly elaborate on the additional agreement? Is it just along the lines of ARPA requirements and reporting requirements, or is it more sort of small p policy in terms of what the city would like to achieve through this agreement with United Way and Heading Home?
I anticipate it's going to be a little of both. So Beth, I wasn't here when the original agreement was done, but I know that it was pretty broad. There wasn't a lot, I think it was very quick in the terms it was trying to get out during COVID, trying to get the money out the door. And when I had this conversation with Beth Kate, she said she was anticipating trying to get more detail added about programs, timelines. As we all know, ARPA has to be committed by 2024 and spent by 2026, and she was anticipating getting this done last year before, you know, the last part of the administration just didn't get done. And so I'm looking at it, and I've already had one conversation with Randy and Mary, and said, I think we ought to agree upon, you know, some detail about timelines, really about programs. There are a lot of different ways that ARPA could be spent. There are also these restrictions and reporting requirements, so let's put that in the agreement. And then let's talk about maybe some more specifics about, you know, when you're talking about, and the Heading Home Plan is great, I think I'm going to attach that as an exhibit as well, but in the, in the exhibits to the, to the draft agreement, we'll have things like, like a risk assessment questionnaire. Do you, do you have bylaws? Yes, United Way does. You know, who's the project manager? Things like, you know, do you have audited financial statements, that sort of thing? But we'll have like, this draft that Beth left me had like a construction progress report. I'm not sure if with these funds, they're going to actually build anything, so that's one question I need to kind of know. Do you want, are you going to do kind of a bricks and mortar, or is it going to be more program related? Some idea about project obligations and expenditures, maybe a breakdown. So I think, and if you have questions, maybe Randy and Mary might be able to fill you in a little bit more about what they're thinking.
So the core of the question is, and all of that makes sense in terms of the reporting side, is that if we are to approve the appropriation today, and per adventure, the city and, and United Way don't come to some full agreement on how that money is spent, it just, I don't understand what, what, to be very colloquial, and I'm sorry, but like, what teeth you now have, once the money has been approved, oh, how do you make that agreement now, you know? I mean, and I trust that there's good faith and all that, but, but like, if, if, per adventure, there was a disagreement on how those funds should be spent, what happens?
Good question. So the appropriation is the permission to spend the money. We wouldn't be actually spending the money until we get that agreement signed. So we have to ask you guys to appropriate it, but the agreement will be inked and signed before the money, this remaining 1.5 goes out the door. Yeah. And I also, and I mentioned this to Stephen Lucas, you know, certainly, I think, you know, we wanted to get this appropriation done, because in that amendment that Beth Kate, the city did sign an amendment at the end of last year, kind of giving us another month to work on this. In that amendment, it said that they, let me find that language, basically froze the remaining $700,000 that's in their bank account. And so I don't want to sit on this and wait a long time, because that, they agreed in that amendment done in December of 2023, that they would just, you know, hold tight on that remaining, the remainder of the 1.2 that was done. And so I'm not going to wait a long time to get this done. We're going to, we both, both sides have said we need to work on this and get the detail in there. And certainly, if you guys have thoughts about detail, I'm all ears.
Councilmember Stasburg?
Thank you. I am interested in hearing from United Way representatives about both what has already been done in terms of the $500,000 or so that's already been spent, and if there are plans out there right now about what you're going to spend the rest of this money on, and kind of as a tagline of that, one of, in the packet that we were given, Exhibit A had a list of deliverables that included a live data set for monitoring progress on homelessness and housing insecurity, and a dashboard accessible to the public, and I'm wondering what kind of progress there has been in that specific area.
Okay, I'm happy to step away from the podium. Do you guys have any other questions for me? Okay, I'm not going anywhere.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Mary Morgan. I'm Director of Heading Home of South Central Indiana, and it's good to see some new faces. And those of you who've been here know that we've been before council a few times to give an update on our, our work, and so I'd be happy to come back whenever and give a full report. I will say that when we started this, we didn't jump into it just to be a pass-through organization and to spend money. We've really taken this initial period to really try to understand the needs, and I'll remind you all, too, that our mission is to look for long-term, system-wide changes that will make homelessness rare, brief, and non-repeating, and we're working on a regional basis, so with the six-county region of Morgan, Monroe, Owen, Lawrence, Green, and Martin Counties. So just more specifically, the data dashboard is one of our priority projects that we've been working on for quite some time. There is a database called the Homeless Management Information System that every federal-funded agency uses, but there are varying degrees of compliance, well, not compliance, there are varying degrees of depth of usage, and so it was, we've done a lot of work with our partner agencies to really try to understand what the situation is, where the data gaps are. My colleague Tatiana Wheeler takes the lead on that, and has done a fantastic job. We are, our goal was this, our current goal is this month, so we have to launch the data dashboard. We have one in place, we're just trying to solve some technical issues with it, so we are very close to that. And I think councilmember Asari has a understanding, in his capacity at IU, he was helping us with that. We also are doing work with an organization nationally called Built for Zero. It's working with over under communities internationally, mostly in the U.S., to support work to decrease homelessness significantly. The data piece is one of the things that they've really helped us with, and their data coaches have been invaluable. We're the only community in Indiana to be part of that network, which also provides some funding opportunities that we're going to pursue. One of our target goals is to end veteran homelessness by the end of this year, which is a pretty big lift. We started a year ago a veteran case conferencing initiative, where we are gathering all of the agencies that have case managers that work to put people in housing, working with them, as well as folks from the VA and the Veteran Services Officers, and primarily Monroe County at this point, but we've done outreach to other counties, too, to understand who those veteran homeless folks are, and connect them more quickly to resources. So that's another initiative that we're taking to get to that functional zero, is what it's called, for veteran homeless. So I will say, one of the other bigger programs that we've done, and these are not, as you can tell, bricks and mortar at this point, that might be something that we pursue, but one of our other big initiatives is landlord outreach, so we're building a landlord support network with the belief that it's easier to open more housing units that are currently just not open to people with vouchers, housing vouchers, than it is to build new units. So we're doing outreach to try to encourage more landlords to accept housing vouchers. Currently, I think the percentage is 36% of residents that have housing vouchers are not able to secure housing because they can't find a landlord who will accept that voucher. So we have a lot of work to do there. Those are just some examples of our work, and we're happy to work with the city to reach this agreement. I actually would have loved it if we would have had clarity two years ago when we started down this path, so I'm grateful to the city for, for working with us and to get this clarity. And I'm happy to answer other questions if you have them, and happy to schedule something with Mr. Lucas, so I could come back and give a full report.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Councilmember Rallo, you had a question?
I have two, but since Ms. Morgan is at the microphone, I'll ask. The question is, is relevant to constituent public comment this evening.
Sure.
And the people who spoke were concerned about emergency immediate needs. My understanding is that the Heading Home Report and what you described is more targeted toward long-term needs, so you are not addressing that this evening, or you're, or these funds will not be addressing that. Does United Way focus on emergency needs, such as exposure?
So our mission, when we were given this funding very generously, was that there, that it was not our role to do emergency response. I could tell you now that if we did emergency response, there are emergencies every week, and we would, we would have spent that money in the first six months. And, and I think that it takes some discipline to say, we have these needs, and if we spend, if we allocate a certain amount of money for long-term, long-term solutions, while looking for ways to address these short-term needs, we need both, but if we don't have the former, if we don't have the long-term solutions, we're just going to be continuing to address these short-term crises. So I recognize the need. I, I meet with service providers every day. We convene a shelter check-in every Monday. I hear these needs, and the women's shelter was closed, we had many discussions about that. I think that part of the challenge is communication, so there are some people that are not necessarily hearing the things that are going on, and that's, that's something that we need to do a better job of, for sure. And so I think that they are, the needs that were expressed at Public Comment are real, and I recognize those, and I will just say that we are, we hope that our work will decrease the amount of times when those crises occur.
Yes, thank you.
Of course, the attention of this council and the administration is on emergency needs as well. This happens not to be the case in terms of this appropriation. I have one other question, but it requires the discretion of the President.
If we could move on and do, we'll get you in the second round.
Great.
Give everybody a chance for a question first. Councilmember Zulik, did you have your hand raised earlier? Okay, that's been answered. Any? Any other first-round questions? All right, we'll go to second-round questions. In that case, councilmember Rallo, you can go ahead.
Well, the discussion I was talking about wasn't necessarily order, but it was the topic, and so this is adjacent to homeless, and since the question was, came from a public comment about the multi-faith group, and I saw Ms. Rice was nodding her head, perhaps she could address that question, if that would be all right with the chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
I had that I would pass that along to Carrie. So I did, I did send an email to her and copied Stephen, so we could get the gentleman's name, perhaps.
It was Thomas Schwant.
Okay, yeah.
And it was who is represented in that, multi-faith?
Yes, and I also copied the Brett staffer, the office of the mayor, in case, I know Isabel said he might call in, so yeah, we'll get that information.
Terrific, thank you. Terrific, thank you.
Councilmember Zulik.
I would also like to get that published on the city council website whenever, whenever that information is available, just to make sure that the public is in on what we know.
Yes, yes, we will endeavor to do that. Councilmember Zulik and I had talked with Mr. Lucas after last week's meeting about putting a spot on the city council meetings webpage where we could put follow-up information. So we will find out what that spot can be called. Currently, we have a limited number of labels for it, and put, put the information out when we get it. Other council member questions? Okay, seeing none, we will go to the public. Is there any member of the public, either on Zoom or here in council chambers, who would like to comment on appropriation ordinance 2024-01?
Madam President?
Yeah.
I know that tonight's opportunity for public comment on this item will constitute the statutorily required public hearing on this appropriation. I'm not sure that was said.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Rallo? I appreciate that. Mr. Lucas, can you make the announcement for how to make a comment via Zoom?
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to speak, please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom. You can find the raise hand feature in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the host if you are not able to locate that, and we will recognize you that way. I do see one, one hand raised at the moment.
Okay, let's go ahead and do the Zoom person first today.
Yes, we have Thomas Schwant again.
Mr. Schwant?
Yes?
You are welcome. You're welcome to comment on appropriation ordinance 2024-01.
Thank you very much. My question is this. Can we, as citizens, have a specific accounting of how funds to date have been spent by Heading Home? Can we, as citizens, please see the evaluation plan that is associated with this investment in Heading Home? How can we be assured that the money spent has an impact? And how are those impacts defined? What measurements of effectiveness, for example ROI, and efficiency of the work of Heading Home are available to the public? I'd appreciate answers to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody in council chambers who would like to comment on this legislation? Okay, anybody else on Zoom, Mr. Lucas?
No, not that I see.
All right, we will come back to council members for any follow-up questions or comments. Are there, first of all, are there any follow-up questions? Okay, seeing none. I will just note, so for Mr. Schwant, we have on record your question. Those are questions more for the administration than for the council. So again, I will ask the mayor's office to get some answers for you. Any final comments then from council members on appropriation ordinance 2024-01?
Then just to maybe take up two comments that were made, both by council member Rallo, I think very apt questions, given the current time and the gentleman online. I, I'd just like to point to the fact that many of the long-term investments that Heading Home particularly has made actually have led to our ability to respond to emergency things. And I think that we saw that very clearly a couple of weeks ago with the convening of stakeholders, the start last year of conferencing amongst, and you said it, and I'm bad with words, but case conferencing amongst service providers. I think the, that is a direct response, a direct result, I think, of the long-term investments and strengthening the infrastructure and the agility of our system. And so I just think that that should be noted for the record, that, you know, I think that tension between long-term and short-term things, there's, there's also a harmony, right, that's, that's produced in that investment. So I am so grateful that you brought that up, Councilman Rallo.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I would just ask the administration to share with us the responses to Mr. Schwant's questions about accounting for how funds are spent and the effectiveness of this funding. And then we can also add that to our website for the public's benefit. I would appreciate that. I see Corporation Council Marjorie Rice nodding, so I appreciate that. Councilmember Stasburg.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to kind of third, or maybe fourth, that voice and that idea of transparency in fiscal reporting and being really open and apparent about how these and other ARPA dollars are specifically being spent, and that some people really are interested in those details, and it's nice to be able to have somewhere to point people toward if they're wondering how city tax dollars are being spent and where those dollars are going. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rice, did you want to respond? I just want to comment, Mr. Schwant, if you're the University of Illinois retired professor and IU professor that I see on LinkedIn, you can contact the legal department at 812-349-3547, and I'd be happy to talk to you in more detail about your questions to make sure we get your information. And I definitely think, you know, the, how the money's spent is the easy part. I think the, how is it effective? That's the harder question to answer. You know, that, and, and I'm going to rely upon people that are smarter than I am with statistics and that data to help with that. But I do think that that's always our challenges. How do we know when we appropriate this money, the money and spend it, whether we actually made a difference targeted? So if you guys have ideas about that, let me know. It looks to me like, again, not that I'm stalking Mr. Schwant on LinkedIn, but I'm telling you what.
I got his contact.
Do you? Okay, he does seem to be somebody who's got a program evaluation experience. So I'll be happy to talk to him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice. And I will just comment that, since it's been referred to several times, that there was a meeting involving two city council members almost two weeks ago, right after the closure of an encampment on Patterson Drive, that those two council members were asked by Mayor Thompson to participate in that meeting. It was not an appointment I made for, you know, any official committee. It was just kind of a, an urgent getting together of stakeholders to discuss the homelessness crisis. Other council comments? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on appropriation ordinance 2024-01?
Yes, Councilmember Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Stasburg?
Yes.
Thank you. And that appropriation ordinance is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Thank you, Ms. Rice. We now move to, we have no, nothing for first reading, so then we move to a period of additional council comment on matters that were not on the agenda tonight. So if anybody has, council has comments for us, you can approach the podium, and you'll have up to five minutes. And please be sure to sign in and also state your name for the record. Mr. Lucas, can you give the instructions once more for anybody on Zoom?
Yes, if there are members of the public that have not already offered public comment earlier in the meeting that would like to speak now, please use the raise hand feature to let us know, or send a chat to the meeting host.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Charles Montag. This year was my first year voting in Bloomington. I worked on various campaigns, and I can't tell you how joyous I was to cast my ballot, to see the people I worked so hard to get on the ballot actually be on there. Some of you may also know I'm on the board for College Democrats at Indiana University. Last year, the College Democrats got over 600 people registered to vote, and today alone, we got another 44 registered. Despite what you might have heard tonight, I'd like to let you know that I see every day young people being active in politics. They don't take their duty of voting lightly. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but after hearing some misleading comments, I felt like I couldn't stay silent. I wanted to make sure for the record that everyone understands young people care about what goes on in their city, what goes on in their state, and what goes on in their country. And with that, I want to thank the council for the time I've been given.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lucas, is there anybody on Zoom who would like to comment?
Not that I see, no.
All right, anybody else in council chambers? Clerk Bolden, would you like to make a comment?
I would. Would you refer that idea from your, or from the podium?
You can remain where you are, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I know I don't usually make public comment, but I was listening to the meeting this evening, and I felt compelled to speak up, literally, in this case. I was at a conference last week presenting, and one of the things that the conference organizers did was to work to make it a more inclusive space for all who were attending. That included sign language interpreters, Spanish interpreters, and what do you call it, simultaneous closed captioning on all the screens. One of the things they did to make sure that everybody understood and felt welcome from the beginning of the conference was to show a video at the beginning encouraging the participants, presenters, and otherwise to speak slowly and clearly, so there was time to actually capture everything that was being said by the interpreters, and to make sure that everybody could hear them and/or see their sign language interpreter. So there were other things that were wonderful about the conference, and I'd be happy to talk to you all about them. But that was one of the things that I considered this evening while listening to all of you talk, and some folks have better use of the microphones than others. And I know I struggle with it myself because I have frequently heard from members of the public that I'm very soft-spoken, and I need to lean closer into the microphone and talk louder. So what I learned, or one of the things that I learned, was to speak up, to speak a little slower, and to speak clearly. And I will ask all of us to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Bolden. Any other public comment? Mr. Lucas on Zoom? No. All right, well, then we will move on to matters of council's schedule, and I will ask Mr. Lucas, are there any highlights for us tonight?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention that the councils, the Special Committee on Council Processes is looking to meet next Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Notice of that meeting will, will go out either tomorrow or Friday. So for the folks on that committee or anyone else interested, please make a note of that. The council does not have a regular session next Wednesday, so we will next meet on February 7th.
Thank you very much. And I understand we will have some legislation for first reading and perhaps a sidewalk committee report on February 7th.
At this time, I believe there may be additional items of business between now and then that get added.
All right, very good. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, seeing nothing, we will adjourn. Thank you very much.